First off, we're having a public hearing regarding the Little River Project. Matt from Lobella is here to give us a little presentation about what we've been working on for what seems to be the last two years.
Our Tim is on an airplane and Nick had planned to be off today. Tim was supposed to be here by time.
I was just asking, so Tim's been pushing it.
Yes, so he's somewhere twenty something thirty thousand feet. In a tube with his kids, so I'm sure he would rather be here.
Matt, take it away. All right, good afternoon or good evening, everybody. My name's Matt Rogers, I'm with Lobella Associates. This is the best we can do, but we'll get this, we'll provide it on the village website as well. So last year this time, the village received a grant from Hudson River Greenway Valley to assist in preparing feasibility study to provide recreational access to the Little River. Do you want me to turn?
Yeah.
Use the scroll.
Yep.
Yeah, unless you're in the front row, you probably can't pick that out very well. Over the last, it's probably been about thirty years, the village and a variety of stakeholders have looked to try to reestablish recreational, both hiking and navigable access to the Little River and then ultimately out into the Hudson River. This version of the analysis is really looking at trying to establish an initial recreational connection and then phase approach to actually increase navigable access to the river. So we identified about a four hundred acre study area. It's accessible through East Elmwood Road, which is privately owned. The study area includes multiple public and private property owners. The majority of the land out there is vacant or abandoned. The access that we're looking at establishing is focused on DOT right-of-way. So the vast majority of that land out there is actually owned by DOT, part of the right-of-way for seven eighty-seven. And even though it's constrained by very small culverts right now, the Little River actually still is title-influent. So it is still part of the Hudson River title. So as part of any feasibility study, we do a background analysis and inventory analysis to get a better understanding of the current conditions and also look at past projects and past studies to get a better understanding of what other, whether it's the village or DOT or other stakeholders have evaluated and the findings that they've come to. The primary purpose again is recreational access, but also potential future environmental education. And trail connections. Village does have a trail connection to the Empire State Trail, the bike ride trail. But this area could also possibly provide another hiking trail, access to the bike ride trail, the Empire State Trail, which would be a great additional access. And like I said before, built on previous studies, both, two of them done in one in two thousand eight. So that's pretty dated, but it does have some good information on there in terms of the history of the property. And this study also aligns with the twenty twenty comprehensive plan because it did identify the desire to create additional recreational areas within the village. Manans really is the only community without direct access to the Hudson River since the construction of seven eighty-seven. You can see it, but you can't touch it. Now, you can get into the rail trail or the bike ride trail now with that great connection, but there is no direct safe connection to the Hudson River. Prior to seven eighty-seven, it was a fairly free-flowing tributary. And, you know, through the history of the village of Manans, prior to that, there is, you know, significant railroad use in there. The railroad has since been abandoned and been removed. I think they had amusement park back in there. They had all kinds of things going on back there, along with industrial uses. That also could possibly present some brownfield concerns. But when they put seven eighty-seven in, they put in culverts unless you're very intrepid and you want to slide through those culverts. And, you know, maybe Seth, that thing's the only one that might want to do that. There is real, really no connection out to the river right now. And Reimagine seven eighty-seven, which has been ongoing for a couple of years now. That's the DOT-focused study that's looking to reconnect the Hudson River and also neighborhoods that have been separated by seven eighty-seven. They're in support of this project and their recommendation would be to replace those culverts with a bridge. However, that part of any improvements to seven eighty-seven is certainly down on their list of priorities. Admittedly so from DOT, but they did come here as part of seven eighty-seven. Reimagine had an informational session. We've talked to them and they say we are in support of that and we want to reconnect or provide the village with that connection. It's just not something that's likely going to happen in the very near future. So the rest of our analysis, you know, we did a detailed study of all the property owners. We've had property conversations with some of the primary property owners. We'll discuss that in a minute. We know there's some historic and cultural resources back in there, just based upon all the previous uses, industrial uses. The concern for brownfields, again, because of the past industrial uses, the past railroad uses. Just based upon that, we expect that at least this area to be considered a brownfield by legal definition. Obviously, we have to put a shovel in the ground to take a look at it. But prior to real disturbance, you know, the village partnering with the state would have to take and make sure we're not going to be uncovering anything that needs to be remediated. Also looked at all the environmental resources known, again, as part of the estuary. It's a boldly go flyway. And the vast majority of this area serves as a very important wetland that protects this part of the village from flooding. Obviously, we have no intention of really impacting the wetlands. So we came up with two alternative concepts other than the access point to the river, which would be on DOT land, which of course would require coordination with the state. There are issues with the abandoned railroad. If you ever try to have a conversation with the railroad, you know how difficult that is to get. We wanted to locate a direct access point because the further you get out there, the less eyes that are on the public. And there are, again, all other private property out there that, you know, there's individuals trespassing. Need to provide adequate.
You said.
I'll be lucky.
Okay.
I don't want to doubt that. We want to provide adequate parking, ADA access where appropriate and feasible. Public safety, again, visibility, making sure that public safety. There's the fire department and police can have eyes on the recreational area. And then ensuring that if there is a need to get an emergency vehicle down there, that there's adequate turning radius, radii to get in and out. So. The two concepts that we came up with, first is concept A. So both of these would involve utilizing land that is owned by the regional market. And we've had conversations with them. They're not against the project, but obviously, given its initial or the fact that it's very preliminary, you know, the village hasn't signed any legal documents. We're not entering into any agreement with them, but they're okay with the concept in principle. And we designed this in a way that would not impact their operations. It would require moving of the fence, probably signing, whether it's a lease or some type of an agreement. But the concept A is more of a loop. Parking area that again would provide better turning radii for the emergency vehicles as well as, in addition to car top. So we would prefer this be more of a car top as opposed to bringing trailers in. This would be non-motorized access. The East Elmwood Road, which is the main road that connects out here to Broadway and then the road that goes north, that's actually, well, East Elmwood is under the ownership of Joe Buno, who owns Cloverleaf. Cloverfield.
Cloverleaf.
Cloverleaf, for whatever reason. We've had conversations with him. Again, he's like, okay, in principle, just don't block my road. And that's why we wanted to design this in a way to take people off of the access road into his facility. And then down here would be the access to Little River. This would be in part of a wetland area. So again, recognize that we would have to coordinate with DC, although they generally are in favor of recreational access that involves disturbance to wetlands. So this would be a floating dock that would be anchored into the shoreline. It would provide a stone dust path, which would be ADA accessible. We've looked at other access points closer to the parking area, but the grades are too steep. And then there's a culvert that discharges directly into Little River, kind of probably at the best location. But there's nothing we can do about that. And then the second alternative is just a simpler approach, but that would cause too many conflicts with Joe and his ability to get in and out of his property there. So that's not the ideal one. So our next step right now is to work with our small committee, which actually, I should have mentioned before, Tim Lane has been involved in this since the beginning along with Kevin Aggerty, who's the village historian. Yeah, I don't know. And Ivan Ramos, who is a retired planner. Ramos. Okay, so again, I brought all this down. Ivan and Kevin have been instrumental in providing the background information of the property and the past work that DOT has done in coordination with the village prior to this project getting started. I just got one more slide. So we will confirm that concept A is the best approach. And then we'll prepare some preliminary cost estimates that are, again, are necessary to help us kind of get an understanding of the funding that's going to be required, knowing that this is a long-term process. We'll finalize the report and then we'll have that available for the public review. We'll do one final presentation probably a little bit later this spring, early summer, with the full report to sort of, but you can see that. Today's goal was to at least introduce this project to the public and get you thinking about this. We'll make, the village needs to maintain their partnerships, obviously, with DOT, with the property owners. Again, in terms of implementation, this will have to be a phased approach. DOT, again, in terms of any type of replacement of that, of the culverts, unless they fail. And they did look at those and they are getting towards the end of their useful life. And if they do need to replace those immediately, they probably just replace them with the culverts as opposed to the bridge. But at some point in the future, we hope that they will open up navigable access. And that's important, too, just from a ecological standpoint. And we hope that they'll maintain that initial agreement that they would do that. The railroad, which is the main north-south road, if we ever been back in there, that was the original railroad. And we're in, you know, conversations with the railroad, but it's primarily one way. And what we're hoping to get a better understanding of is, you guys don't utilize that. There's no more rail line back there. You know, it's just something where we could coordinate with the village and take ownership of that. And just dispense with the fact that they own that. It used to provide access to the regional market and a lot of the industrial uses prior to that. So it's been ripped up for twenty years or so at least. Yeah. And so that's a real big part of it, too, because in order to cross that main road, you know, it is owned by the railroad, so that needs to be addressed. And then, like I said before, the implementation would be phased, you know, if funding can be provided and maybe even the Brownfield Opportunity Grant Program might be able to provide some additional funding. Just getting access out there, constructing the docks and then being able to enjoy the recreational area back there, maybe start to build some trails and coordinate with some of the other property owners to build some trails back there. And then at some point, again, maybe have navigable access to the Hudson River. So all the implementation steps will be laid out in the report. And this would be something that, again, the village would be focused on in terms of grants that become available over the next four to five years. This would not be something the village would pay for on their own. And also look for other partners, whether that's Albany County, again, Hudson River Valley Greenway. They're always a great partner to provide funding. And perhaps other nonprofits that might be out there to provide that funding and as well as volunteer efforts as part of implementation. So that's kind of a quick overview of where we've been, where we're going. And again, probably within a month or so, we'll have the full report put together and report back to the village board. And continue with coordination with the different nations. And again, we'll put this PowerPoint up on the website. So that's available. But happy to answer any questions.
From the board first?
From the board for it.
Tim isn't here, he's on, like I said, on a flight. So I think his questions have been answered since he was part of this, part of this working group. So that's that, Molly.
So first, thank you for a great presentation. And as you mentioned, as a kayaker, you know, it's exciting. Let's hope that many of these hurdles are surmountable. But certainly, it's exciting to look at. A couple of things, so just as we were, as Tim and I started talking about this project, bringing it back up about three years ago, that's when we were actually contacted by Congressman Tonko's office about the New York, New Jersey Watership Protection Act. And what Congressman had said is that if this passes, it's going, the whole goal is to open up funding for communities to be able to do projects like this. So we passed a resolution supporting that. I'm not sure if the money's now going to be available. It's not exactly reliable at the federal level right now, but that was something so that's, I'm hoping at some point that could be a source of funding for us for it, you know, as well as. And I also know that Congressman Tonko has been helpful between him and Ivan. They had a connection before this, which was very helpful. So they, we actually had a Zoom with Tonko about, can we replace this culvert with the bridge? And he was trying to push that. I think a lot of it is beyond his control, but certainly was a thing. But certainly, you know, and I appreciate what you'd said about building and cultivating the partnerships. And I think there are more opportunities to do that, especially with trail building. We get requests from groups, boy scout, girl scout groups all the time that want to build or put up trail markers and whatnot. So I think that's certainly exciting if we can get that access. So I'm looking forward to reading the report when it comes out. And let's hope we can keep finding grant money for that. Because we've done a good job with that so far. This is going to be a large project, but I hope we can do that. So thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Except Molly. Public questions, sir. Anyone from the public have a question? Bill, go ahead.
Not really a question. I do support the Little River Project, which is proposed. I mean, for recreation, health, welfare and the quality of life reason. Now, during last year, as well as this year, I made plans for my proposal recreation waterfront facilities on the Hudson River between X six and seven of seven eighty-seven. Which I'm naming for Ron Miller and I want to name for Tom Cole to serve as mayor of our village from two thousand seven and twenty eleven. That was one of his favorite projects and it was very dear to him. And I believe Ron Miller had done a lot for the environment and recreation parks and all this. So I would like to see the recreation waterfront projects along the Hudson River in our village to be named for Ron Miller as well as Tom Cole. You know, Ron Miller's my hero, as is Tom Cole. So I hope you'll consider it. I already turned over to Tim Lane during early last year and Molly Harvard during this year. Okay? You're welcome.
Anything else regarding Little River? Ideas, comments? Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Want to stay up there and you want to talk about, how about we hit number five, the grant for Polk Switzer since you're there?
We have to close the public hearing.
Technically, it's not a public hearing. We called it a public hearing, but officially it's not. So I don't believe that we need to close it.
We'll just close it anyway.
Because I have it written down. Sounds good. So six, five, four. Let's go to, we'll talk about the grant for Polk Switzer and some of what we've been doing and applying for essential grant for that.
Actually, we're going to do the resolution, the submit.
Well, that's what Matt wants.
No, but that was, that's for the, okay, my statement. I thought it was for Little River Private.
No.
If you want to give a quick summary.
Sure.
So we're working with Brian. Well, preview, last year, the village received a nineteen thousand dollar grant from Albany County that was left over our funds to begin improvements at Polk Switzer Park. And so that's a good start. And the states providing grant funding through their municipal parks program. And that's an annual grant. And so we're working again with the village to apply for that. That's a little more involved process. It's much more competitive than the Albany County one. But the focus of improvements there would be to construct or basically reconstruct the exercise recreation trail that was removed some time ago due to erosion issues. And then add in some static exercise stations that, again, these aren't going to be ones with with pulleys or any type of movement because those don't tend to last very long and this had to climb it. So putting down a stone dust path for those, adding solar lights at each of the stations, constructing a, at least a phase one for children's playground system. Future phases, we hope to get additional funding to put in ADA accessible playground equipment. And the last phase that'll be part of the, well, there's two different ones. There's the creating actual parking area, so pull in right in front of where the current basketball hoop is right now. So right now, you got to park along the road. Not ideal, so we'd like to get at least six or seven spots that pull straight in. And then replace the basketball hoop with a dog park. So the asphalt is in significant disrepair. So we looked at replacing that and keeping the basketball hoop, but in conversations, it's not a very well utilized court. So the idea would be to grip that up and then put down sod and allow that to be a dog park. And future phases would be a community garden, but that won't be part of this grant application. You know, we need to focus on the budget that's currently available. We also have the limit areas of new disturbance that are part of this grant because anything that goes to the state, they're going to look at it with a microscope for historical and archaeological issues. And we want to be able to limit the need to do any archaeological studies as part of this and hope that we just get a green check from SHPO either prior to submitting this or after it's submitted and prior to the award contract. So right now, we're finalizing the equipment types on the total cost estimates. This is a ninety percent grant, so the village would only have to pay ten percent of that. And we're hoping to mix both a cash component as well as in-kind services. So at that DPW can provide some assistance with, particularly with with grading and removing the basketball court, constructing the parking area, scrubbing and all that. Their time and hours would go towards the match, which would limit the cash match that the village would be responsible for. So we're also coordinating with Brian as well as your state, federal representatives to get letters of support, which is always important, to demonstrate that the village has support for this grant. And it's due May second. So tonight, the village needs to pass a few resolutions. One to authorize the submission of the application, that's always a requirement. Another one to reaffirm the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. This is just a requirement for the parks grant to demonstrate that, because it's over five years old, we're not advocating the village update the compliance just yet, you got a couple of years. But doing this resolution demonstrates that you are still in favor of that because it does recommend improvements to Polk Switzer Park, which is important. And then the third is to designate yourselves as the agency and classify the action under SEAKER. Again, you know, this bureaucracy, we got to check all the boxes. Because prior to putting a shovel in the ground, you know, we have to address SEAKER and make sure there's no impacts. And the only major potential concern would be historic and archaeological implications. And we're waiting on a response back from SHPO on that.
So if we talk about the flexibility with some of the elements that we've kind of looked at for the plan and, you know, some of what we talked about, you know, with.
Before he does that, Brian, I just have a quick question. So I thought that we had a committee together.
That was part, that's part of this application is creating the committee that could finalize the elements.
So my concern is that I don't think that the people in the neighborhood or the people in the village will agree with some of these things that you're proposing that we do. So I thought the purpose was to put a committee together to come up with these options of what we wanted to include.
So the funding closes May second. If we don't apply for something, then we lose the opportunity.
I do understand that, but we've had this grant money since last year and you kept saying we're going to put a committee together. We're going to put a committee together. So I'm just, I have some concerns just about, you know, going forward with this. I don't think that people will be, I mean, I spent half of my life growing up on Elmwood Road. I can tell you, if I currently live there, I would be like, this is a waste of village money, what you're proposing. So I just have concerns that we didn't put a committee together and we don't have community input on these projects before we go through and put money into it.
Well, applications always score better with, with, you know, more community support. So there's.
Can you elaborate on what's the.
Yeah, so, you know, you say like phase two maybe would be an ADA playground, right? But we already have a playground here in the community that's not ADA compliant, right? So I think an ADA playground would be the priority over a regular playground. I don't know that people would say that the basketball court is underutilized. I think the shape of what the playground, the basketball court looks like is why people don't utilize the part, the basketball court. the playground, the basketball court looks like is why people don't utilize the part, the basketball court. Um, you know, I don't know that putting exercise equipment is what the people want back there. Yes, they want the walking trail, but they want the playground. Um, I think the parking is great. That was also why I said I wasn't totally on board with selling that third property on Glenwood, because again, that could offer additional parking where people could access the back park. Um, you know, I just don't know that these, you know, and I don't know that people want a dog park back there. You know, like I just, we didn't have any input on these projects, and we're just saying, here's what we're gonna do. Um, and I don't know that that's the right way to go about this project.
Well, we need three votes, since there's only three of us here, that, so, I mean, uh, I guess essentially that kills this, you know, our ability to get...
I mean, we, well, hold on. I, I mean, and here's the thing, can, we can still approve the, the grant, which I think is extremely important that we do. And because of the things that, that you were, there, there were recommendations that none of those have to happen in each form, like the exercise equipment. People may want that, people may not know what they, what they are. So what, what I, what I think we should do, I would hate to kiss this money goodbye. Um, I would like to approve this and, uh, and then figure out of this, what do we do? What combination? Do we still have the, uh, uh, the option to, you know, shuffle things around from there? So right, right now, you have the option, you know, up until about three days before it's due, to, to decide, you know, what, what you would like in there. I mean, we said the ADA would be phase two, but that's from a cost perspective.
But that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think?
Well, it depends on, you know, what, what we're talking about, but we can go back and take a look at, you know, and, and obviously very in support of providing ADA, um, uh, accessible playground equipment. And so we can look to see, uh, what's out there that could be reasonable within this, uh, within this budget. Um, we can also, what we did as part of the, the Albany grant, one of the ideas was to resurface the, 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 um...
Basketball.
Basketball court. And there's, you know, it's a fairly large park. Uh, the, the dog park could be a phase two. I'm just throwing this out here, so you guys, you know, uh, you need to decide what you prefer. Um, the exercise equipment could be a future phase, uh, that doesn't necessarily have to be funded as part of this. Um, and, you know, o- obviously, in an ideal world, we'd have two, three months where a, a committee can be constituted and, and we can provide more input. Uh, but, you know, typical state, they announce this one day and say it's due in a month.
Right. When, when did they, when did they announce it?
Uh, probably about four weeks ago, four, five weeks ago. So, and, you know, the last, uh, couple of weeks, you know, it's just been, yeah, general conversations trying to figure out, you know, what, what you guys would possibly, uh, consider to even give the questions that are, that are available. So.
Right.
Um, I can also take a look. So CFAs, which is the Consolidated Funding Award Process, you know, uh, they should be announced fairly soon. They're due at the end of July. Um, there often is a, a part component associated with that. Um, but I'd have to double check. They may have pulled that out specifically. But just right now, and, and may not be available for that.
Well, and, and I, I certainly understand all of that. Certainly, I, I, I want public input in it, but I also don't wanna lose this opportunity, uh, to do this, uh, because then, then what? Do we wait how many more years before we, uh, uh, we can do this? Because no grant is, um, is slam dunk. Um, so, um, I, I'd hate to, to lose that, that opportunity now. That would be, that would be sad.
I can say passing the resolutions tonight do not bind you to submit.
So the, my concern, I, and my concern is that in this resolution states the five specific things that will be done.
And you can modify that tonight. You can, uh, the, the resolution does not have to be that specific. The application, this is where, is the details, uh, have to be finalized. So, uh, you can revise that, say, them recreational improvements, uh, to Polk Switzer Park.
How, how specific do the elements have to be, like, uh?
In the resolution, it, it just, basically, you just need to authorize the submission of a grant after picking, uh, the application itself is where the details, you know, need to be added.
That's due by May second, right? And we don't have a meeting before May second.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm here tonight, is you don't need to, so that's it. Um, so again, the resolution, the primary purpose of that is so the statement go, okay, yes, this wasn't just submitted by the back.
Right, right, right.
The village board approved the submission of the grant. Um, and then if you guys iron out the details, you know, you, you, uh, we'll provide the cost estimates, uh, that you can take a look at, uh, but it'll probably still be in line, we're looking at, again, it's ninety percent. Grant over reverse, that's the target. Uh, the ability to coordinate with the, the neighborhood and everything like that, I have to defer to you guys in terms of, you know, full timing. There's just not a lot of time. Uh, but I will, uh, first thing tomorrow, uh, check to see if we anticipate additional grant, recreational grant as part of, uh, the CFA process, which would give you some time to get a committee together. Um, the, the other alternative, where you'd have to look, like, to coordinate with Albany, uh, would be to sub that grant, uh, funding to do a, a, a formal park plan process. But we have to look to see what, what grants, uh, go back to that.
Right.
So I know there's, it much gave you...
Right.
Um, the authorization to proceed. So we're happy to, it's just the many way we can.
So of the, of the elements that are listed here, what, what would we like to change in order, I, I, I mean, for instance, do we agree that the, the path should be restored?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, that that shouldn't be controversial.
Uh, is it, uh, uh, still proper to keep it an exercise path?
Yeah.
Is that general?
Right, you, yeah, we can keep calling it an exercise path.
We're saying, I do not, yeah, we do not wanna put the equipment back. Is that correct?
So I'm not personally saying any of this. What I'm saying is I have concerns going forward with such specific changes without the community input. So I would say at this point, to keep the, you know, it, the only thing I think that could be more specific is getting rid of the, getting rid of the basketball court, and instead of just a regular playground, installing an ADA. And if that means not doing the exercise equipment in this phase because of the costs.
Right, I mean, if you decide against that, you know, that's a good, good chunk of change that could be devoted to plan out, could be combination of ADA, non-ADA playground. And...
So, I, I mean, it, it, every piece doesn't have to be ADA, it just has, has an ADA.
Yeah, they just have failed to assess it. Like, even the one up at Ganser Smith, because of that drop in, makes it not ADA.
Right, yeah. So, and we'd have to take a look at, uh, grades too.
I thought you said a grade does work, though.
Well, where, where we're looking at it works. I mean, we, we, you have to grade out and prep, and, and you have to put down a certain type of, of, uh, space that is ADA acc- uh, accessible. The, the parking area, once we, the hammerhead's in, um, the idea would be to create it so it's, um, accessible and we, and we do show a path, I think, running from the parking lot over to that. Uh, so that would be, again, uh, a stone dust. You know, if you wanna put in an asphalt, which is steeper than concrete, obviously, uh, you know, that is fully, um, accessible. Stone dust path, as long as it's maintained, you know, meets ADA accessibility and then, uh, maintains certain grades. So, yeah, there, there's, I think, with the exercise equipment, that saves that money. Um...
I think that was what, thirty-four, forty thousand dollars?
Their test equipment? I got a lot of, a lot of cost estimates up there. Um, and then if we say, hold off on, on the dog park, which honestly is not gonna score a bunch of points with, with, uh, OPR HPD.
The, the dog park isn't?
Well, I mean, not that they don't like dogs, but it's like, you know... You know, for moving one recreational, um, uh, resource for, for one, that's, that's not, you know, that as, uh, focused on, on the surrounding area. Uh, so, you know, we can go back and update the cost estimates, resurface that.
The dog park, uh, wouldn't be that expensive either.
No, and you, and again, with the, uh, the nineteen thousand dollars from the county, you know, that, that might be enough to grade, and, and again, this would be, so we could pull that out of this. Because if we start showing additional, uh, because we focus pretty much everything in an area that's previously observed.
Which is why we couldn't do the community garden, is right.
Yeah, yeah, which you can do, you know, volunteer.
Yes.
And then so the dog park, that, you know, is, is something where the, the neighborhood does support that, you know, that could be a future phase, not under this grant, uh, and you're not tied to, uh, those... And, you know, part of this too would be, you know...
My, you, I can't do.
Uh, and, you know, you know, I'm not speaking for the village, but basically to say, and then the future, you know, improvements, uh, and implementation would be coordinated through the committee. That, that'll be established, uh, that'll look at long-term improvements to that part. Let's leave that part from, and the community garden.
Yeah.
Uh, and then if there is a desire to, to put anything along the track, you know, down the road.
Yeah.
Right now, we have those six stations.
Six lights around.
Yeah, I think the, the lights, uh, are, uh, you know, important for that, I think.
Uh, so, uh, we're, we're striking number four. Uh, I'm sorry, we're striking the deteriorated ex- ex-, uh, exercise equipment.
Well, we're, we're, um, well, we're at least gonna remove it, though, right?
Yes, for, for the purposes of, of agreeing on a resolution.
I think that's already been taken out.
I mean, it was pretty deteriorated when I was a little kid, but...
Say it again?
Question? No, not right now. Thank you. We're, we're trying to work through this before we get to public comment. I just wanna make sure that we, we pose a resolution tonight, so that we can at least apply.
Yeah, yes, it would, yes.
So how do we get to the point where we're comfortable with a resolution allowing us to submit an application? And at least have the opportunity to have the discussions about what elements we want to, uh, put, put into the park design. And then part of the application that we, we, we've looked at, uh, is the, what we've, how we describe it, formulation of a neighborhood, uh, community group?
Right, Parks Committee. Well, it'd be a Parks Committee, but, but you would, uh, involve, obviously, you would ask members of the neighborhood to be involved, but there would be, you know, future public meetings and committee meetings where anybody can attend to, to provide input on their designs for the park. Um, you know, and if, if the grant is awarded, you know, there is some flexibility, you know, in terms of selection. So we do have to show that we've looked at ADA equipment. We got some cost estimates that are real. But in prior, you know, in terms of the timing, you know, it's gonna be at least six to eight months before they award this and you get a contract. So we have to go back and look, uh, and as long as we stay within the budget we've allocated for the different, uh, types of equipment, then, then the village assumes, um, what, what to select. So that is, again, where the, the committee, uh, everybody can, uh, can be involved, and we can bring in, um, individuals that have, you know, ADA experience and provide some input, so that it's a true, uh, co- collective process. Um, that, that can occur between now and, and award. And, you know, if for some reason it's not awarded, you can still have that committee and, and then work towards a future grant submission, which would only increase your chances of getting an award.
And I think, um, and I think like what you just said a minute ago is, is very important. So, you know, we, let's say we approve all of this, you know, except for the replacing of the, the exercise equipment. What exactly the playground looks like can be up to this committee. There's, you, you have that time and the ability, oh, you know, we want this here or that there, turn it this way or add this, take that out, right? So I think that's, that's...
As long as it's based within the budget.
Yeah, but I think that's, um, I think that's a good compromise to make sure that we, um, that we can tap into this funding source, but also get the, uh, neighborhood input and community input that we need for that. People agree? So...
So the other thing would be number three. I would not get rid of the basketball court just yet.
So if we, so to that point, if we, number one, the replacement of an eroded exercise path, period.
Yep.
The installation of solar lighting around the exercise path, the replacement of a deteriorated basketball court, period.
I would get rid of that.
You don't want, you don't want the basketball court back?
Oh, you're saying to replace it?
Replace it, yeah, re-surface.
I mean, but at the same time, I feel like, again, maybe the, the community would not want a basketball court there. So that's why I would just leave. At this point, I feel like if it doesn't need to be touched at this point, I would rather see the money go to the ADA playground than making a change.
Does it, we have to state whether it's ADA in the, in the, in the...
Yes, yes.
Uh, can we just say we're the focus on ADA, ADA accessibility?
Yeah, I mean, we will have to show, we will identify some, some ADA equipment.
Yeah.
We will show that it's a combination of ADA and, and regular playground equipment. Um, and then that total budget amount.
So can we, can we say the installation of a new playground with a focus on ADA compliant ele- or ADA elements?
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine for the language. And then we'll, we'll, we'll go back and, and to the different vendors and see what's available. And again, you know, if we're saving money on the exercise equipment, and if we're not gonna resurface the basketball court through this, um, again, maybe some of the funding from the, the county, if it goes to basketball, uh, service, uh, would provide a, a fairly good budget for a, a great playground, both ADA and non-ADA.
Um, and, uh, expansion of the parking area, we already talked about.
Right, yeah.
And we need that.
Yeah.
If there's no parking there, technically.
Right.
Is that a resolution that we can feel comfortable agreeing to?
Yes.
We remove the, that's touching the basketball court as well.
Yes, so three is, three is striking completely. Now, is that enough? Okay, yeah.
Especially, you know, the, the focus on the ADA, that, that's gonna be, I bet it'll score more points.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we're really just focused, you know, instead of spreading this out. Um, and keeping the basketball court, it's not gonna touch that. Um, we don't have to, uh...
Yeah, you know, I don't wanna say when we, maybe people do want a dog park, maybe somebody wants a skate park, maybe, you know, you don't know. I'd hate to spend the money to fix it if that's not what they want, but also to rip it out. If they do wanna fix it, it's easier to fix when it's there than it's gone.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think ripping it out is, is, uh, is necessary, okay? But the, and the dog park, I don't know, is a way to use it. I think we talked about it as often a base for, uh... So, yeah, um, is that, is that where we could...
Yes.
I, I, I just, I don't wanna lose this opportunity to apply for this.
Right.
You know, these, these come up, like Matt said, very quickly.
Right. They're due very quickly.
They do very quickly, yeah. Um...
And as we said, that we can, uh, we, we can, you know, look at different things, uh, you know, change things out.
I personally wanted to, everybody was talking about a community garden, and I would have loved to throw that in here.
I'd think these are something.
But, but it, 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 it would be an element that would...
And, and it's not a big cost item, that, that...
Right.
It's not worth adding new disturbed area to this.
You can talk about that.
You can consider through other volunteer donations and stuff. And that, that's typically what you ever, you know, gets people involved. Put my call.
Off, yeah.
Feedback. Yeah, so I think this, this focuses, uh, the village's needs, uh, and then, like Molly said, preserve our ability to coordinate with the, get that committee constituted as soon as possible after submission, uh, and, uh, begin to work on, look the long-term plan for the park. So.
Okay, do we need to read the entire, okay, so which, where are the resolutions, Matt, that we need to, uh, that we need to adopt?
So, Don, will you just make sure you correct Brian's spelling of his name?
Good work, where's it?
Uh, number three, under the now four, therefore it be resolved to your neighbors' fault, bro.
Check. That one. Thanks, Don.
Wait, just get from that, you're on time. It wasn't that, what's the one?
I hear you yelling.
What he's saying, Don, the resolution, he said.
All right, so.
I'm an I, not a Y.
So I'm gonna enter the following resolution. A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. Under the Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant Program. Um, you want me to, uh, skip to the, what it is? The whereas, like, what?
Sure.
One, okay. Whereas the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation offers funding under the Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant. To support such initiatives that promote the public's use and enjoyment of recreational spaces. And whereas the village desires to undertake improvements to Polk Switzer Park, including. And one, the replacement of an eroded exercise path. Um, uh, two, installation of solar lighting along the exercise path. Uh, now, three, the installation of, uh, new, uh, playground equipment, including, uh, possible ADA equipment. And, uh, five, the expansion of available parking. Uh, whereas the village intends to apply for funding through the Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant Program to support the project. With a required local match of ten percent of the total project cost to be provided by the village. Now for there be it resolved by the village board of the Village of Manans that, one, the village is hereby authorized and directed to submit an application. For funding for the project under the Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant Program offered by the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. The village commits to providing a ten percent local match of the total eligible project costs, which may consist of cash and or in-kind services. Brian Marsh, uh, Village Mayor, is hereby authorized to execute all financial and administrative processes related to the grant application. And subsequent implementation of the project, subject to the approval of the village attorney as to form. And for the resolution ta- shall take effect immediately, so moved.
Second. All the fair.
Hi. Okay, next, be the other two.
Just reaffirm that the comprehensive plan, so if there's language in there about what the project is.
Oh, that's the third one. So, uh, I'm going to, uh, offer a resolution reaffirming the twenty twenty comprehensive plan for the Village of Manans. And supporting continued improvements to Polk Switzer Park. You just want the, so be, um, now therefore be it resolved, okay? Now therefore be it resolved by the Village Board of the Village of Manans, County of Albany, State of New York. That, one, the Village of Manans Comprehensive Plan adopted in twenty twenty is hereby reaffirmed as the official guide for planning and development in the village. Number two, that the Village Board expresses continued support for improvements to Polk Switzer Park. In line with the goals and, uh, strategies identified in the Comprehensive Plan. And recognizes the park as central to the village's effort to improve public access, recreation and community wellness, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi. And then the, uh, the lead agency wants, so I'll, um, uh, offer a resolution. The Village of Manans Board declaring lead agency status and classifying the Polk Switzer Park Improvement Project. As an unlisted action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Um. What, what?
Uh, just now therefore.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Village, uh, Board of the Village of Manans hereby declares itself to be lead agency. For the uncoordinated environmental review of Polk Switzer Park Improvement Project pursuant to the required secret. And, uh, be it further resolved that based on the project description and review. The proposed Polk Switzer Improvement Project is hereby classified as an unlisted action pursuant to six. Uh, NYCRR Part, uh, six seventeen dot four, and so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, I'm proud of you, sir. All right, so.
My pleasure.
So, committee for the success. Uh, or not news for that. It all been. Uh, anyone who wishes to be part of the committee for the park, please just let me know.
You were.
About, go ahead.
No, I.
Well, right, because you, so clearly, Lobella has drawn maps and there's a location to the playground. And you had some other plans for replacing the basketball court with a dog park. And possibly phase whatever a community garden, which are things that people in the neighborhood have talked about. But when you got the money from Albany County, you asked people to be on a committee. And there was never any, hey, we're having a meeting or come be, there was no communication about it. So like, all of this could have been avoided if you had formed the committee when you first got the money. Because New York gives out playground and community grants every year. Like this, just because this one had a short deadline, you could have been planning for this since you got the nineteen thousand from Albany County.
You, are you gonna, can I?
I guess, yes.
So the nineteen thousand is, is enough money to basically start planning where things could potentially go. So that we could fit all of the elements into the park. And so basically nineteen thousand dollars is, is going like that. This is not a debate.
But you do that with the committee.
This isn't a debate, so I'm not, I don't want to debate this. I guess the question at this point is, do you want to participate in the committee going forward? To look at the elements that we are now applying for and figure out whether that those are the best plans and what, how exactly to implement them. The engineering, the engineering looked at where are the logical places for, for different pieces of what we've talked about in concept? If we could have everything. And because of the timeline to turn this around and get it applied for, we needed to meet that deadline. Applying for something and getting our application at least in front of this board that makes these decisions was imperative. So that if we don't get it this time, we will more likely be assured to get it the next time.
I think what you're missing, what she was trying to say is you're saying we spent that money to have these.
I'm not saying we spent all of them.
You're saying the money was to go towards, but the thing is, you're saying where things could go that we've talked about. But the we should have been the committee. That was, that is the point that she was trying to make. You, you did, when we first announced that money, you said, we're going to start a committee, you must be on the committee. I remember Lisa was sitting in the audience, you're like, you want to be on the committee, she was like, sure. So the point is that, like, the board as a whole, and not just I knew, the ball was dropped. The commu- the committee should have been formed right away the moment we were awarded that money. So that's why I did see that we were going to talk about the park on the agenda, but all of this information I read when I got here tonight, right? So like, had I read this information prior to being here, I would have sent an email and said, we can't, this, where was the committee? Like, these are things that, so that's the point, is that you've already had the engineering team look at, where can a playground go? Where can a path go? Where can this go? But like, we don't know that that's what the committee, the community wants. So the very first step should have been, what does the community want? Even if it was a Facebook post, what does the community want? Post, you know, people think, and then going, and I understand.
Timeline of getting a group together, i- i- it's, it's very challenging. Uh, to, to get to, to the point where we can submit, uh, and at least get considered for funding for something and then pick the elements.
I'm not talking about this specific project. I'm saying when we originally got that money, a year ago, I think it was almost a year and a half ago at this point. And something as simple as a Facebook post that went out there, hey, we got money to do Polk Switzer Park. Did you even know, one, that there's a park there? Two, what would you like to see there? It not even necessarily a formal group, but I think you saw with the numbering of Glenwood, renumbering Glenwood, they, I mean. I just live there and I haven't seen most of you in, you know, fifteen years, they all showed up here that night, right? So again, it could have been something as simple as that, like, hey, this is going in your neighborhood. Which is why I could not sit here and say, yes, we're going to do all of these things, because I don't know that that's what they want. So I think that there's some, people are upset that we, they heard a year ago, we got all this money and then there's been no talk. And now you're giving me like a forty-eight hour deadline to decide something was important.
Matt, when did, when did I share this? Do you remember when?
For the Albany County?
Yeah.
Um, well, it was about a year ago. I mean, in, in terms of when we applied for it, um, I can't remember of hand when it was awarded.
And the original, the original nineteen thousand dollars had, you know, had the pass.
You had the pass.
And had the exercise stations on there and had, you know, had the parking on there. Uh, the things that weren't in there.
So I don't recall even the discussion of applying for the grant and what the details of it were. Maybe we asked for the permission to apply for a grant. Um, I just remember you saying it was awarded, so. Um, but I think from that point, even from when it was awarded, the ball has been dropped in getting a committee going and getting community input. Um, and hopefully we can fix that moving forward.
Yes. Are you in agreement with being on the committee?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
How I get into be part of the committee, what's the procedure?
Well, uh, we, we, we want some other people on the committee, but we'll, we'll, I'll talk to you.
Yeah, I like to be on it.
Okay, I'll talk.
All right.
All right.
Probably.
All right.
All right, um, and I need to, due to not enough board members, I need a two-minute recess.
We're gonna go to, uh. Yeah, we need a table, we need to table that. Uh, we need to table number eight. I still need more data for number nine.
I was, I was, I was saying.
I was gonna say that, I saw the like, how many go out, how many.
I, I've been trying to get more info from her. I'd like to know how many, uh, I'd like to share members for part of the Village of Manans.
We've called years. Is that like a thing registered to be a?
Thank you for everything.
All right, so would you say six, eight and nine were two going?
Nice to meet you.
And those involve six minutes. We're heading.
There's not, there's not expensive things. They have anything.
All the things.
I think they do.
And then change the color.
Yeah.
Like something that's wrong.
Yeah. No, please, you got some green. I, I don't, if you bother, you're excited to read.
That's the next one.
No, it's fine.
Shale.
That's mine.
Oh, sure. I'm gonna run.
It should involve. Easy to involve people.
Yes. May, may.
He's not.
Yes.
But he's. Four weeks away. She married the mayor.
That's for a long time, more than twelve years.
He's lost a lot of weight.
Yeah, is that what it is?
It should be term limits for less than.
Yeah. I agree.
Those people, they should be lots of.
Talking about me?
I'd like a whole, something like a float it. I don't want it to be worth. For exercise, you know, but.
I weren't.
All right, we're back.
It's like.
Uh, Tom, we need, uh, where are we?
Um, two.
We need a motion for the minutes from the previous meeting of April seventh.
Our motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
War, warrant number four eleven point five, general, seven thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Water, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twelve cents, totaling seventy-five hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety cents. Warrant number twenty-two, eighty-nine thousand three hundred and sixteen and three cents. Water, three thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Sewer, four thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents, totaling ninety-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Payroll number twenty-three, hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen ninety-six.
I want one.
Second.
All of them.
Hi.
I vote. Did you do payroll, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna table, we're gonna table the site plan approval amendments to, and engage the narrow road.
Yeah. Um. We're seven.
So you're gonna do the packaging.
Uh, you're gonna do this out here, you're on.
Yeah.
I have it here.
So, um, we, uh, we were asked to, uh, pass a resolution supporting the New York State Assembly, uh, and Senate bills. Uh, to pass a, a strong packaging reduction and recycling infrastructure act. Um, there's a bill in both the Senate and the State Assembly, uh, for this. And, um, due to the greatly increasing costs of recycling, uh, to our community, um, I'd like to offer this resolution. Uh, whereas packaging makes up approximately forty percent of the waste in New York State. And whereas managing waste costs New York taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars annually. And whereas the Village of Manans paid twenty-five dollars per ton for disposal of household recyclable material in twenty twenty-two. Increasing to fifty dollars per ton in twenty twenty-four, and again, increasing to a hundred and sixty, uh, dollars per ton in twenty twenty-five. And whereas most plastic packaging is not recyclable. And reusable and refillable packaging systems are not widely available. And whereas plastic causes severe pollution, including litter and the use of toxic chemicals. And whereas companies that produce packaging should be responsible for the cost of managing packaging waste, not just taxpayers. And whereas enacting the Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act pending in the New York Assembly and New York Senate. Would reduce waste, increasing recycling rates, uh, uh, create jobs. Uh, reduce toxicity in packaging, provide millions of dollars in savings for local governments and taxpayers. And lower greenhouse gas emissions. And be it resolved that the Village of Manans urges the New York State Legislature to pass. And Governor Kathy Hochul to sign into law a strong and effective packaging reduction and recycling infrastructure act. Senate Bill, uh, one thousand four hundred and sixty-four, Assembly Bill, uh, one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine. And resolve further that the Village of Manans shall forward copies of this resolution to Governor Kathy Hochul. New York Assembly Speaker, uh, Speaker Carl Hasty, uh, New York Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins. New York State Assembly Member Philip Steck, New York State Senator Jake Ashby. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Commissioner Amanda Leffton. And all others deemed necessary and proper, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Next is, uh, Brian. Elevator.
Oh, we're gonna have six, we're gonna table that. We're tabling. Yes.
Number eight.
We're tabling, okay. Uh, we're tabling number nine, we need more information from CDTA regarding the bike share. Uh, elevator?
Elevator. Um, the elevator needs to be serviced, it has to be, we have to have all the hydraulic fluids drained out. And new, uh, fluid put in, it's, has to be done every ten years, and it hasn't been done in quite a long time. And I don't remember it ever being done to neutral, that I had. Plus the, the service and the oil replacement is nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, it has to be done.
Is that on its building's budget?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve Otis elevator to service and change the oil in the hydraulic elevator lines and power unit with new hydraulic. At a cost of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second it, but I'm assuming they reached out to us and says it hasn't been done?
Yes, I, actually, I, I've looked back, I've looked at all the records that we have of, and I cannot find it, but it ever been replaced.
I second it.
All of them.
Hi.
Uh.
I need a motion to hold a public hearing to address tenure. Might be why explain this.
Yeah, so every ten years is it?
Yes.
Uh, we have to renew a franchise agreement which allows us. To collect the revenue from the utilities, uh, tax. Uh, and under the. What law was it? Uh, communications law that require that the public have a. Uh, uh, it's a hearing.
Yes, public hearing.
Public hearing. So we need to set a public hearing for May fifth.
At six P M.
At six P M.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All of the favors.
Aye.
I oppose. And I will highlight any changes if they're right.
Uh, water bill. Water rates.
Water.
Okay, it has been since twenty-twenty-three, since our water rates have changed with the upcoming, uh. Infrastructure project in the South End and the, uh, upcoming expenses of the South End Infrastructure Project. Uh, we need to increase rates which will be effective for the period starting May one through. October thirtieth, thirty, thirty-first.
That'll be billed in January.
And that'll be billed in January, which would make essentially, um. Uh, three years since we had a rate increase and I am proposing a rate increase of five percent, which basically breaks down to less than.
Two cents three.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, that was an error.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Where, like what, how do we calculate that we need to raise by this amount? Is this out of the water work?
Correct.
Okay.
So basically five percent works out.
Does this have to be passed today in order for it to take effect? We can't go in the next meeting.
If we don't, if we don't pass it by the next board meeting.
Can we pass it at the next?
You're not gonna, what you're doing is send the public hearing.
It's not.
Oh, no, this, oh, no, I'm sorry.
We don't pass it tonight.
It has to be passed tonight because if not, then there people go into the effects. This will be after the next filling cycle.
You can't adjust for the period that you were currently.
Yeah, so it'd have to wait a whole another year.
Our special is.
Wait till November.
Why were we not given? I would have liked to see the financial information behind this before being asked to raise it. Uh. Do you have enough like? Anything?
So with the, the debt that's coming on, uh, we approve, we approved the budget, uh, uh. The, the, you know, the last, uh, meeting.
Hmm.
Uh, essentially, uh, a five percent, uh. Gives us the ability to start building, uh, our cash position before we have the debt from the infrastructure project starting to come on. Uh, over the last three years, surely five percent over those three years is well below inflation. Uh. Labor. For nearly everything is, is up. This should be done essentially every year. We should be adjusting our rates. In some manner, even if it's a small amount. Uh, and that's the, that's the plan that I think that we need to get into is looking at that every year for rate adjustments rather than being reactionary as we've been in the past. And previous rate increases have been as much as ten percent because we're always playing catch up. I, I feel that we, we shouldn't be doing that. Not every other entity raises rates annually. So I think that's the plan that we need to be on. Financially, it's what we, it's what we need to be on.
So even though this won't take effect till the session that starts May thirty-first, we have to pass it tonight. We can't.
Yeah. No, if not, then we have to wait another year.
Yeah, till November. First.
That's, that's, that's where we're at. And the, uh, the analysis has shown that if we don't, if we don't increase our rates more frequently. We're constantly playing catch up instead of covering the costs as they rise incrementally during the periods of time. That's basically.
So I will go ahead and, um. Motion this, but I would like to see the numbers.
Sure.
I'll second it.
All of the favors.
Aye.
Seth, your proclamation.
Okay, so, uh. In honor of Earth Day that is, uh, tomorrow, um. Uh, I have a, a proclamation and a resolution to, to offer. Um, you know, I'm proud that both, um, that I've been a part of two administrations that have, uh, made parks, uh, a priority. And now we've made, uh, many, um, really awesome improvements over the past, uh, twelve plus years. So I'm proud to offer this resolution. Whereas April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of Earth Day. A global celebration uniting over one billion people in a hundred and ninety-two countries to take action for the health of our planet. And whereas the theme for Earth Day twenty-twenty-five, our power, our planet. Highlights the urgent need to transition to renewable energy sources and triple global clean ener- uh, electricity. Uh, generation by twenty-thirty to address climate change and protect our ecosystems. And whereas the Village of Manans has been a leader in the use of renewable energy sources. By, uh, using a solar energy supplier for all village accounts and promoting the use of solar energy to our residents. And whereas the Village of Manans has made it a priority to reduce its energy consumption through the use of L E D. Lighting throughout the village and all of our municipal buildings. And whereas the Village of Manans recognizes the importance of environmental stewardship and the role of local communities in reducing waste. Conserving energy, improving air quality and preserving biodiversity. Whereas Earth Day, uh, offers citizens the opportunity to educate themselves about sustainable practices. Advocate for environmentally friendly policies and participate in activities that promote a cleaner and healthier planet. And whereas the Village of Manans continues to improve and promote our parks, including significant improvements to Polk Switzer Park. And Hutton Street Park, as well as past improvements to Ganser Smith Park and the Sage Estates Trails. And encourages its residents to, uh, visit and utilize these outdoor spaces. And therefore, I, Seth H. Harris, Deputy Mayor of the Village of Manans. And Brian A. Marsh, Mayor of the Village of Manans, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five as Earth Day in the Village of Manans. I encourage all residents to celebrate this day by participating in local events such as tree planting drives. Community cleanups and educational programs. Let us unite as a community to harness our collective power for the benefit of our planet for future generations. So moved.
My second.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, um. Do you wanna do the other proclamation?
Yes. Uh, yeah, I can do it now. You want me to do it now? Okay, so, um, so originally, uh, Kate and I were supposed to visit. The Mohawk Hudson Humane Society, uh, for a tour and, uh, learn about some volunteer opportunities and some way to, some ways to help them given, um. Given the, uh, spotlight they've sort of been thrown into in a, in a positive way. Um, unfortunately, due to a, uh, an emergency that came up, uh, there, uh, that got postponed for two weeks. Uh, and originally I was going to offer a, uh, a resolution for them. Um, but we're gonna do this a little bit differently. I'd like to introduce this tonight, offer this tonight, and then when we go in two weeks. Uh, bring this to their, uh, Executive Director, um, to express, uh, support for not just them, but what, what they do. Um, and, um, bring awareness to, um, uh, the prevention of animal cruelty. So this is a resolution proclaiming April as Animal Cruelty Prevention Month in the Village of Manans. Whereas the Village of Manans is committed to ensuring the humane treatment of all animals within its borders. And whereas animal cruelty is a serious issue that affects the well-being of animals and the community as a whole. And whereas the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society located in the Village of Manans. Is the oldest and largest animal protection organization in New York's capital region. Providing shelter and care for stray, abused and unwanted animals. And whereas on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, Schenectady Animal Control seized a stray dog missing an ear in appallingly bad condition. Who is being cared for at the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society for wounds to her face and head, among other injuries. And whereas the no longer stray dog has been named Lavender. And has become the face of our community's animal abuse crisis, yet the stories of hundreds of other abused animals will never be told. And whereas raising awareness about animal cruelty prevention is essential to creating a safer and more compassionate environment for animals. And whereas April has been designated as Animal Cruelty Prevention Month to highlight the importance of protecting animals from abuse and neglect. Now, now therefore, I, Seth H. Harris, Deputy Mayor of the Village of Manans. And Brian A. Marsh, Mayor of the Village of Manans, do hereby proclaim April as Animal Cruelty Prevention Month in the Village of Manans. And urge all residents to, one, be diligent in reporting any suspected cases of animal cruelty to the appropriate authorities. Two, support local animal shelters and rescue organizations. Three, uh, educate themselves and others about responsible pet ownerships. And four, treat all animals with kindness and respect. So moved.
Okay.
All those are favors.
Aye.
I oppose.
Can you walk forward a little?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Mayor, report.
Okay, uh. We are still reviewing with LaBella the bids for the South End Infrastructure Project. Uh. We want to make sure that we are completely. Understanding of how the numbers played out the way that they did. And make sure that, uh, we pick the right vendor for the completion of the project. So we are going to. Have a summary to the board, hopefully before the end of this month, so that we can pick.
We can vote on it.
Vote on awarding the bids by May fifth. Uh. The tire removal project, uh, at, at, at the, uh, along the Gold Canal. Is proceeding. I shared some pictures with the board. They should be done tomorrow, uh, on the cost side. Uh, some of the, the daily expense is higher than we anticipated, but. It seems as though the cost per tire is going to be lower than expected, so. Uh, it may actually, it may actually work out to be a wash as far as cost. Uh, I think they've got five hundred.
More than that. It was five hundred of yesterday.
So it's, it's, uh, five hundred tires, a twenty dollars a tire, and maybe. Six hundred and fifty dollars versus six hundred and fifty tires at like eleven dollars a tire because some of them are truck tires and they, uh, they're more expensive, so. Um. It is what it is. We need to get it done and close out that D E C violation. Uh.
I can't even imagine what six hundred and fifty tires looks like.
And how many truck loads?
Eight loads so far.
Eight loads.
Wow.
Couldn't have been gold bars.
They're right. Next time.
Uh. Mike Hagman and his crew are going to be putting in, uh, concrete pads at Ganser Smith Park that install the actual. Fixed recycling bins next to the trash cans. That work is going to, uh, start soon. Um. We need to approve an emergency tree removal at Ganser Smith Park. There's a large. Is it dead or dying?
It's dead.
Uh, poplar tree.
By the, it's the tree that's close near the basketball court right next to the weekend wall.
Oh.
And. The hard point sphere is that it's such bad shape that with the, if it fall, it could fall onto either the basketball court or the T-ball fields.
Uh, it was part of the plant to be removed. When we did the tree work. What, two years ago now?
Two years ago.
Um, and we, we did not do it then because we thought the crane was gonna sink into the ground. We're gonna try and see it.
What they're gonna do is they're gonna drop the tree. And Mike is gonna fall away instead of having the crane and everything come in there. So.
Uh, so the cost for that is twenty-five hundred dollars.
Is that thirty-six?
No, twenty-five hundred.
Uh, Mike told me thirty-six.
No, twenty-five hundred. And then we have to have them remove the two thousand, or two hundred dollars of tax.
Okay.
So I need approval to do that as an emergency for twenty-five hundred dollars. Okay.
I'm so moved.
Okay.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh. The upper bathrooms are gonna hopefully be completed in the next month or two. To, to finally get that closed out and we'll see what money we have left for Ganser Smith Park to close out that Sam Grant from Phil Steck's office. And.
Is it gonna be completed or will it be started?
I'm hoping for both.
Okay.
They don't need nearly as much work as the lower bathroom. So Tony said it shouldn't take that long. Uh, we talked about a grant writer for the, uh, for the whole, whole village, uh, same stage. Uh, the fire department uses this grant writer, uh, the. She has agreed to start working with us immediately to start working on some grant applications, but we will not, we will not be billed until the new budget. Uh, uh, as I said, when, when we authorized starting to work with her, the, the bill for the year is fifteen thousand dollars for the rest of the village. So I'd like authorization to sign the contract with them pending billing after June first. So I can start working with her on some grants.
My motion.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh. Let's see, we are going to be participating in the Water Voleet Annual Memorial Day Parade. Uh. Think that's part of our.
Yeah, they've, they've already been approved.
Our department.
And the police department.
Uh.
We don't have to approve the use of.
It's already been, we did that at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Uh.
Organizational, yeah.
The next edition of the Manans Monthly is coming out. It was a collaborative effort amongst. Many different people and thank you for collaborating on that. I think it's a good issue. It's got some good stuff in it.
When, when should we receive that?
So it's. For the land.
It'll be first week in May.
Okay.
Probably. The week before.
So the first is on Wednesday.
It's, it's usually, it's like, it's gonna be, it's within that week.
Yeah, okay.
Uh. Is that all I have?
That's all I got.
Alright. I probably got.
Uh, so, yep, um, so I covered some of, of, um, what I wanted to say, uh, going along with, um, with Earth Day. Uh, Kate and I, uh, went, uh, for a walk on the, uh, Sage Estates Trails before coming to the meeting. And we want to thank, uh, Manans School, uh, and the, uh, Manans Public Library, um, for another great story walk book. Um, we enjoyed that. Um, there were some kids who were enjoying it while we were there and, um, it's great to see, um. Uh, four years later, the story walk is still, um, still thriving. So, um. I encourage, especially this week, uh, being Earth Day, I encourage more people to get out. If you haven't seen the, uh, current book, the trails are, are in good condition. Everything looks, uh. Looks good back there. Still cleanup season. The park looks good. We were up at, uh, Ganser Smith Park as well. Um. People playing basketball, people playing, uh, uh, baseball. Um, again, it's good to see people outside and let's hope the weather continues, um, on the upswing. Um. Other than that, um, again, enjoy, hope everyone enjoys their Earth Day.
Thanks.
Um, this Wednesday, the Board of Education will be holding a public hearing about their Capitol project. Um, then immediately following, there will be a, uh, update on the budget. Um, their formal budget presentation will be on Wednesday, May seventh. Um, and then next Friday, April twenty-fourth. Uh, six o'clock. Six thirty. Um, next Friday, the seventh grade is holding Brooks barbecue. Today was the last item pre-order, but you can order onsite for fifteen to six P M. Again, that money goes so that they can go to Camp Ginger Cook next year. Um, Friday, May second, they're doing another middle school fun night. They still need some volunteers. Saturday, May third, the eighth graders are folding a bottle drive again from eight A M. to ten thirty. Uh, they're trying to fundraise for their trip to Boston. Um, and they'll do that again at the end of the month. Um, again, Friday, May ninth, multicultural celebration. They're still looking for people to table for that. Um, the school budget vote and library budget vote will be Tuesday, May twentieth. Um, you can vote anytime from noon to eight. Um, but if you go at six o'clock, you'll get to experience the evening of the arts. Um. That's the house.
Music groups.
Um, there wasn't, I don't think they perform, but they set up all their artwork throughout the school. Um, it's a way to get the parents to the school to vote.
Yes.
Um, but it's, it's really great.
Very nice.
Yes. Um. Don, you had asked me for a lead, it's on report.
Yeah.
So I'm going to do the seniors. The Manans seniors had an active and engaging year in 2024. They organized twelve trips ranging from day visits, museums, tours, theater performances, overnight excursions. In addition to travel, they hosted their annual picnic, Halloween party, and Christmas party, all of which were well-attended and enjoyed. I enjoyed all of them. They proudly represented the village in both the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the Manans Centennial Parade. A special highlight from last year was when Diane Leonard was honored by Town and Colony Supervisor as part of his Celebrate a Senior program, an honor well-deserved for her leadership and dedication. The group was also recognized during their annual volunteer recognition celebration, but thanks all those who contribute their time and energy. Looking ahead to 2025, the group already has fourteen trips planned, showing their continued enthusiasm and high level of activity. They will again host their annual picnic and Christmas party, and they also participated in this year's St. Patrick's Day Parade. They currently have one hundred and ninety-five active members. They have their weekly gatherings every Thursday from nine-thirty to one-thirty. Activities include chair yoga, playing card bingo, lots of great conversations, refreshments available. The third Thursday is pizza and bingo, and the fourth Thursday is their meeting. They also publish their own monthly newsletter, The Senior Scoop. It can be found on Manans website or contact Diane if you'd like to receive it. It features new members, birthday shout-outs, club updates, upcoming trips and events, even some helpful tidbits and fun facts, something I learned, a guide to your bread's delivery by the color of the little plastic tag. The different colors tell you when it was delivered, Monday blue, Tuesday green, Thursday red, Friday white. When they're not
Wow. It's a real aha moment. I just thought they, I had no idea.
When they're not participating in senior activities, you'll often catch the Manans seniors out and about in the community, enjoying concerts in the parks, stopping by for food trucks, shopping in Manans market, and sporting Firehouse Fish Rises and More. The Manans seniors continue to be vibrant, vital part of our community, and it's a pleasure to serve as their liaison.
Thank you, Molly. That was excellent.
And we're going to post some new stuff on the website for the senior
Yeah, and we're going to get your senior
Mary, that's real.
Thank you. That was very nice.
From Courtney, they do performance at the school on that evening, the arts band and chorus performance.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Courtney. Molly, good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Don.
Nomination petitions are going to start being accepted as of May sixth, and the final deadline for submissions is May thirteenth at five P M. On Thursday, May fifteenth, we'll be drawing the placement of everybody's names of the candidates in the ballot. Applications for early voting and absentee ballots can be obtained on the village office or on the website, and then they will be mailed to you. We have to do early voting to state, to this early voting thing, and it's not like we're not going to have somebody sitting there having, where they come and vote. They're actually going to, it's a mail-in thing where you mail it. You get the ballot and you just mail it in.
It's pretty much the same thing as the
And this is same as an absentee ballot, but it's just two different forms.
Right.
You can drop it off.
They can drop it off or they can mail it in.
Are there dates and deadlines for these?
Yes.
Yes. And I don't have the dates on
I do.
But it's, there's a, we can accept the day of election, and anything that we receive after the election will not be counted. Next board meeting, I will not be here. Seth's going to run the thing, and Mary Jane is going to possibly help. My daughter's getting married. And the meeting of June sixth, June second, I will be here also because it'll be ten minute conference. That's all I got.
I'll go in for you that.
Yes, you will.
Thank you.
I'm not even, I'm not even going to ask you.
No, I, I just
Public comment.
Phil.
What are your things? One, number one and two, I support both projects.
Thank you.
Now, number three, while driving on Manam Road and Station Street, I observed one signpost with two street signs and one stop sign on the signpost, which has been leading towards the ground on both streets. I called the problem to the Manans Police and clerk Don Hannity, and I found that weeks later that they fixed it. And I'd like to thank the public works group for getting, for straightening that problem out. Now, back in late, middle, between middle and late March of this year, I observed one traffic light signal system on Broadway and Manam Road flashing yellow light signals on Broadway and well, on flashing lights on Manam Road red during the daytime. What's, what was the reason why?
It had to be reset. It was a D O T.
Sorry, I didn't know. Now, while, now while driving on Hartley and Lewis Avenue, I observed one yellow children at play sign, you know, with black symbols on this sign on Lewis Avenue that's fading pink, and the sign needs to get each replacement. So I already reported the problem to Manans Police and Don Hannity. Now, while driving on Broadway, Manam, I've noticed two fire hydrants with red and white reflector sticks leaning towards the ground. So I already got them written down, so there's no need for me to say. I'm delighted to find out that several of my proposals, you know, for improvements to Switzer Pope Park, this could have happened, you know, in the foreseeable future. So I already got my proposals, so hopefully they'll become reality either this year or early next year. I'm glad to see that the dead Broadway trees were removed from Switzer Pope Park in order to make improvements to Switzer Pope Park. And Brian Marsh, I'd like to thank you for your time with me back in March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, meeting with me dealing with my plan to plant fern spruce forest tree trees in Switzer Pope Park. And I'm delighted to hear that my proposal for planting new fern spruce forest tree trees will be planted in this park. And I wish a proposed grant and tax credits and other incentives to owners of homes and business establishments if they install green roof projects for their homes and, or their commercial buildings. And last, since I requested that the dead hemlock tree be removed from the property of Manam's main pump station, I hope that this tree removal job will be done during the summer. Plus, this tree get replaced by a new hemlock or a new spruce tree at Switzer, at Midport, right next to the Boston Fir Tree. And I will pay for that for the tree. I thank you for letting me speak on important issues.
Thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for public comment?
Steve. I was just wondering, like, how you do your agenda, and you write that these are discussions. Hulk Switzer was a nice discussion, and then it allows some public comment, but some of the others don't really seem like discussions. Like, the water rate wasn't really a discussion. It was just, we have to pass this, we have to do this, we have to do it, we have to do it now, or we have to wait a year or six months. There was no discussion about it. There was no interaction with the public about it. When I was on the board, the last year I was there, there was, there was the start of a project to look at the difference usage through, of water throughout the village, and should there be a base rate and then an accelerated rate? If you use more than a certain rate and, you know, where our volumes in line with other communities, that project died that year. There's been no advancement of that. So the community doesn't know how our water compares to other entities, and there's no comparison showing that these other entities raise their rates every year and by what percent, not to us. You didn't even have a discussion about it. It's listed, here's a discussion, and it was, we have to pass this. We're playing catch-up all the time, all the time, all the time. It's not a discussion. Some of the board didn't know that this was even happening to ask questions. And so I'm just curious why we wouldn't have a discussion, and if it's listed as a discussion, and then asking the community that's here opinions or ideas on that discussion.
Hi, Steve. Lisa.
I kind of have the same question about the water rate increase. So you guys just did the budget, and in your budget, you budget for water and sewer. But now you're increasing the rate, which will be for the second half of your budget year, but that wasn't accounted for in the budget.
So the tool that we are using in order to track the capital was delayed in its implementation. And with Mary Jane and I onboarding the information from the current budget into that system, it was determined that these rate increases are needed more frequently. Otherwise, we're constantly playing catch-up with inflation rather than projecting into the future. And the way that we bill is essentially in arrears. So we needed to do this move today in order to avoid more drastic increases into the future. And looking at the long-term capital planning tool that was delayed in implementation for using it to appropriately work on a budget, that was a problem. And so we, we need this adjustment, and the inflammation that we have looked at with that tool has, has definitely played the help.
But you are the only one who has seen this information. You and Mary Jane and some select few, but not the whole board.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that meeting was, Don, one did I have last week? Was that with water, water work? Yeah. So. Anything else, Lisa? Thanks. Anyone else? Lisa, I'm sorry, Mary.
Mary Graham, I just, along, I guess, along the same lines, maybe just update these, say, discuss and vote, and feel like the discussion is going to include, I'd like to know when the discussion is going to include the public or just the board.
Let me explain that. So the process is to discuss it. If there's a motion and there's a second, it becomes a vote. Only when there's a motion and a second does it become a vote. So it is a discussion, and if there's a motion and a second, it becomes a vote. So to say that it's going to be a vote assumes that it's going to get a motion and a second.
Okay.
That is logistically the way that the open meetings and meetings, meetings rules happen. Don, you want to comment on that as a certified clerk?
In the past, I've, I've put in, approved such and such contract, and then everybody was saying, you guys are approving it before it's even been discussed. Then we said, we're going to put it in as a discussion, and we're not going to put approval anymore, because every time you put approval, then everybody assumes that it's
It's already done.
It's already done. So that's why I put it as a discussion.
Oh, I guess I'm assuming when it says discussion, that the community has some input, I guess.
So I guess, I mean, is the board open to going back to, or even, you know, looking at the same model that the school does, where there's a public comment in the beginning that is only on agenda items? Where people could speak on things that we're going to discuss prior to us discussing? And then the public comment at the end is for other things that are not related to agenda items? But that would allow the public to then have, to be able to feel that they can speak on the things before we have a discussion and vote? Because what, what this response is, is that we're having a discussion and voting on
So the way that, the way that local government works is we were elected to make these decisions on behalf of the public. They put the trust in voting for the people.
I understand, but half the time, I don't even know where, no, because what you're going to say is that we are, we are speaking for the people, but half the time, I don't even know all of the things that you're going to ask us to discuss and vote on until I sit down at this table. So I don't even have the opportunity to go out and speak to people about these items to get what people want out of it.
And again, as an elected official, if you don't feel that you have the information in order to proceed an item further, you cannot send in it, and you cannot vote for it. That's the way that this, these things are moving at the speed of. It's, it's, you know, it's not intentional. I, I guess, let me say that explicitly. This, this is just the way that these things, these things sometimes come up. This matter needed to be addressed regarding the water rates today. Otherwise, we would have to essentially increase water rates an additional hour in order to make up for the nine months that between today and when this, this amount is actually billed. So I, I, I mean,
I guess I don't understand why you're opposed to letting people speak before we have a discussion.
Well, because we have to move this government along efficiently, and, and, and if we've never done it that way, and other municipalities keep interrupting me. I just, I, I mean, I'm trying, you asked me a question, I'm trying to respond. No other municipality does it in that man.
It doesn't care what you say.
You're, you're putting words in my mouth now.
When I first got on this board, the public comment was at the beginning. And you didn't, yes, and everybody came and wanted to talk about
We changed it to the end a long time ago.
It's at the very beginning when I first stepped on this board. And everybody came and wanted to talk about future recovery, and we weren't getting to start our actual meeting until seven, seven-thirty. So we switched it and put it at the end of the meeting.
If you'd like to propose that when the full board is here in executive session, and, 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 and change the, the rules that we agree to on our organizational meeting back in July, then so be it. If you want to make that proposal when we have our organizational meeting next July, then so be it. We'll, we'll consider it. But as of right now, in order to move this meeting efficiently through our agenda items, we're doing it the way that we've been doing it. Does anyone else have public comment?
I do. And in regards to the, the Southern project you've talked about, do we know?
I didn't want to blocking the view, and I didn't want to be disrespectful and take up the
I could have, you know, bought the weed.
Southern project.
Yeah, at some point, I know some contractors out there are better than others.
Yes.
Is there, at, at some point, does somebody vet these? Or are you just going to go with the lowest bidder?
That's what we're doing now. It's being vetted by the, the engineer. Believe me, I brought the board up to speed on what happened.
Not just, I mean, it's, yeah, the loyalty thing or whatever it was, but I also
Eight years ago.
Yeah, I've also heard in talking to different people, I grew up in construction, like dad owned the business area, and talked about some of them that aren't so great and some that are. So when you
It's, it's a lowest reasonable bid, so you don't have to take the lowest bid. And we've had issues in the past where we didn't take the lowest bid because of situations like, like that, where they would play games with it. So whereas they would bid intentionally low and then come back at the eleventh hour with a fifty percent change order. So, yes.
Okay, I was just curious. And when you talk about, we're just going to hear, we were to blah, 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 or are you going to say, here's our five?
Yeah, the recommendation of, of the engineer will be presented to the board and their reasoning behind the support for the firm that they pick. Yes. And we've had multiple meetings with the lowest bidder in order to document why they feel confident that their number is so significantly different than the next highest bidder.
And we did, we did present what all the bids were, you know, so they were even posted. If you want, and again, I can give them to you.
Here you did?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I listened to you.
As the last, as part of the last meeting's record. But either way, then
Yeah. It's, it's, they're online.
And when that's approved, they'll, I mean, like, I'll, I'll have some questions, you know, about it when, when it comes up. So, so yeah, there'll be a proper vetting.
And that's at the next board meeting, we're hoping, right?
That's what it's planned to be, depending on how they
They've, they've been confident that they can get this turned around. So the engineer will present their agreements. Good. I believe before the end of this month. Okay. Good. Which, you know, is enough time for them and not to delay the project any further. The work, the work from National Grid is, I think, proceeding
Yeah, they're supposed to be starting that soon.
Soon, before the end of the month, hopefully.
They're going to start, they're going to do all of Wolford from Northboro all the way up. But because they, the project is going to start, the South End project is going to start on Amsterdam while National Grid works on Wolford.
And then
We're torn up.
Is anything going to happen?
It is what it is, though. I just want to get it done. Listen, I can suck up eighteen months of puddles. Let's get this done.
Yes. And that's really what it came down to.
The earlier the project gets done, the better.
We would like to, essentially, when they trench for the gas line, come right through again with the rest of it so that the, the impact is condensed. There's no sense in having them fill it, patch it, et cetera. Just leave it open and let us rip through it. It's less, it's less ripping up that we have to do, and there's going to be disturbance period. So it's going to be an interesting few years.
Does anything happen to that triangle there? That's, is that, like a pitch under there or anything?
Say it again, which kind?
Where the fly pole is? Where the fly Where the fly pole is?
A little memorial, and that's where National Grid has. We're gonna be the water and the sewer and everything is gonna go right through that area, so that whole triangle is gonna be all disturbed. But not the triangle itself, but sort of the road.
Oh, okay.
And that's what made it complicated is that's the intersection of our road and a D O T road. And we determined finally that there's no incursion, I guess, on the actual Route thirty two D O T owned parcel. And so it's all ours along North Pearl in front of the barrow. That's the village's piece, not the D O T's piece, and therefore we didn't need additional layers of who knows what to. And so finally, they agreed to go for it, National Grid. Good? Okay. Anyone else for public comment?
Everybody online that comment?
Anything for executives? We do not have anything.
Motion to adjourn at seven fifty two P M.
On the paper.
Hi.